Good evening, and we'd like to open the work session of the May 23, 2024 meeting. At 5:45 tonight, we visited Betsy Bell Park, which is our obligation annually. Council gets driven up there by Mr. Crystal, an excellent chauffeur.
Excellent. Excellent. We didn't die.
Took us up there, and we reflected on the mountaintop and looked at the cookout was really spectacular.
Yeah, it was nice.
And we had a good time up there, and we are a little late starting this meeting tonight. So I will entertain a motion for the work session and regular meeting agendas.
Mayor Claffey?
Counselor Edwards?
I move to approve the work session and regular meeting agendas as presented.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Counselor Campbell. Uh, Mr. Kessler?
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood?
Aye.
Ms. Edwards?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Claffey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Boy, you're getting around to be pretty quick tonight. Only five hosts here tonight. We have two absent tonight. Uh, Counselors Robertson and Wood are on vacation. So that brings us to the next item on our agenda, the introduction of our central Shenandoah Health District Director. Ms. Moore?
I am so pleased to introduce Dr. Allison Baracco. She has joined the, our health district as of April. It has been about two years since we've had a health department director of our own. So we are very excited to have her here this evening, and she's going to introduce herself. And she also in your packet is the annual report, and she'd be happy to answer any questions about that as well. So welcome. Thank you. Yes.
Please come to the podium.
Thank you. The annual report is pretty dense, but I'll talk just a piece or two about that. So everyone can get to know me. Some of you know me, some of you don't. I've been at Augusta Health since 2011, so I am part of the Shenandoah Valley. I love being here and through my work with COVID, I was working with a lot of community partners. As an infectious diseases physician and charged as the Chair of the Infection Prevention Committee to help the hospital and take care of the whole, the hospital and beyond. It was really rewarding. I enjoyed connecting with the community and decided to switch gears. So here I am, a little less than one month in as your new health district director. Very happy and proud to be here. It's been a rewarding transition. The report that you have is from 2023, it encompasses the entire year. And it was finalized around March of this year. And I was on a virtual meeting before I started and they presented this report. And I was kind of struck about the breadth of services that the health department provides our community during that meeting. And I can go through a couple of things I can share with you that you have, there's a cooperative budget. And then every locality, we have a very large district, which includes our counties, north and south of us, Highland and Bath County. So it's a pretty large area and everyone contributes to that. But then you can see looking at the detailed report, about 50% of our services, a little less, are to the Stanton, Augusta, Waynesboro area and 50% kind of Harrisonburg, Rockingham area. And that equals 100, I realize. So there is a good portion of work going on in our other localities. But because the bulk of the population is both here and to the north of us, that's where our work is most distributed. So we appreciate the annual funding as it helps mostly to fund the staff. If you look at the budget, almost all of it goes towards salary. And you know, teamwork makes the dream work and we have a great team. And so you're supporting this team for all of the efforts. The WIC services are something that the community thinks about, those that's for women, infant and children. Nutrition services and consultation with the dietitian also helps connect them in for immunizations and other items of care has been very robust. And they were only allowed to go back to in-person services, August 2023. But you can see last year they served about 900 women, 900 infants and 2200 children. So that's pretty remarkable. Environmental health, as far as the services that environmental health provides, vital records, sewer, water, rabies, any rabies prevention calls, restaurant inspections, hotel inspections, campground. So they're very active and you may in fact see them out and about in the community, working with, you know, we have such a wealth of restaurants here in downtown Stanton. So you may see an inspection at a restaurant. They're very present. Emergency preparedness and response. So we just finished a pandemic. And I found at Augusta Health, one of the biggest tasks that we had was we ramped everything up. We had a very robust response, but I found it would be rewarding, but trying to, I call it coming down from the cliff or crumbling off the cliff, coming down the wall. It was a very gradual process to get us back to kind of our new normal. So part of the new normal is being prepared for new things. We have to be worried about measles, the avian flu. We are monitoring and watching. There is no avian flu in Virginia. There was a sporadic cluster in Rockingham County, probably was in January 2023. But as far as this current outbreak that you're seeing in the headlines, that's not the case thus far. But we are monitoring. And then we have the, well, we do have the, the monitoring services are under the epidemiology page. It's a very robust network of people that work in the state and locally. And so I'm doing a very high level overview and I will take questions. Our nurses are amazing. If you look at the immunizations, there have been 4,000 patients, 15,000 visiting, nursing visits, and the vast majority are immunizations. There's children immunizations. There's a travel clinic currently up in Rockingham County that anyone can access. And there's a robust newcomer health clinic that is in the Rockingham Clinic because that is a newcomer city and they have a large population. But we work to serve regardless of where our services are located. We look to reach people where they are. Probably the most dynamic area of the health department is the population health department. And we have numerous community health workers. Many are funded right now by COVID grants. So if you see the connection to care and COVID testing, those folks are funded by COVID grants. And unfortunately, those are slowly, or fortunately, whittling away. And we're looking to how we can refocus our energies. Harm reduction services are something I want to bring to your attention. Then the number of naloxone doses distributed, 890 doses and 337 fentanyl test strips were distributed in 2023. I anticipate that we'll probably see more in 2024, and it's such a valuable service. The one thing I learned at a recent meeting is that we need our community to know that we have professionals. We have confidential services because there are people reluctant to seek us out to receive these services as they're worried about the repercussions. Our maternal child health initiatives, we have a car seat safety program that just launched this past week. There was a lot behind that, so we're excited about that as well. So that is my very broad overview, but I'm happy to take questions from you.
I appreciate the speed that you went through that. One question I have, I'm aware of your facility in Stanton. It shares both Stanton and Augusta Kelly, located on Augusta Street there beside the post office. How old is that building and are there needs in that building? And how do we finance that? Is it shared with Augusta Kelly 50/50?
Yes.
Tell me what your needs are.
Should I tell him my name? So.
This had this discussion, sir, when I met with them. So that's a good segue into this. Yeah. Excellent question.
It is a very old building. Dr. Tenney, I can't remember what year he built it. There are unfortunately no windows because he thought we would be too busy daydreaming. I'll just say that as a side note. So that would be, that's on my wish list. But I guess as far as a need is a roof, I think right now there are some major roof issues. And so a roof would probably be, as far as the practical needs, that's probably high on the list. And then eventually some repaving of that area. But I mean, I have been to all the sites within the past few weeks. I've been making my rounds and I would say that a more modern site really makes some of these people. There's a lot of stigma attached to walking into a health department. I've heard this from friends that had to utilize this many years ago, bringing their children to them. But having a more modern area certainly helps people feel like they're just going in for a routine health visit. But we work with what we've got and the people, as I mentioned, the people being in the core component of the health department, even if the structure is older, the people are there to be professional and treat them in a confidential and very comprehensive way. So I can say we're proud of that.
How much staff is in that building?
It varies. I know. And I probably could tell you if I was there a little longer. It varies every day. On one half, we have administrative offices. And there's probably, probably about 20 people on that half, I'd say. The office staff support have about 10 people tucked there. I'm doing some quick math for you. And then on the clinical side and where my office is, usually there's eight to 10 of us at any time, whether there's nurses there or some of our WIC nutritionists over there. So that, I don't know, that puts you up to, I didn't do the math, I'm sorry, about 40 people. And then our other offices. So sometimes because we're so spread out, we have some people that work at certain offices on different days of the week.
And I guess when you compare us to Waynesboro's facility, we're quite modern.
You're quite modern?
Yeah.
Oh, so Waynesboro actually, they, or we as a health department, we just moved to an office that's across from the Zeus movie theaters. It's beautiful. That's all I can say. I'm happy to give a tour to anybody. It was an optometry and an allergy office, and they had to move out. And so we were able to acquire that space and work there. And certainly if a patient from Stanton wanted to be seen there, they are welcome to come over. But it is like a true modern medical office.
Although I'm referring to when I got a COVID shot down there in Waynesboro at the old.
Uh, I heard there were big problems there. So we're happy. That was actually, that was a real need and we're happy that we're able to move.
I'm glad to hear you move. Questions from fellow counselors?
It just seems like you do everything. I mean, everything. I mean, you do all of these things. You walk in and say, can someone help me with my car seat? Can I need somebody to help me with? It's just amazing.
I appreciate you noticing that. As I think, I think if we have more visibility and people know what we have to offer, there's a lot of things that we can do for the community, which I didn't even recognize until I landed here. So I hope to promote some more of these resources.
Well, welcome, and it's nice to meet you and thank you for everything you do. And please come and see us if we can assist because we have to take care of our population.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Baracco.
But thank you for everything you do.
Reach out if you need us. I'm happy to work with you on the local needs.
Very good.
Thank you, Dr. Baracco.
And that brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is an update on parks and recreation programs and facilities. Ms. Moore?
So I know you just spent time with Chris Tuttle, but he's going to kick off the summer because it's almost pool season with a quick update on programs and facilities and what's coming up. So I'm going to turn it over to Chris.
So let me see where my, all right. So what I want to talk about a little bit is our brochure and how we go about doing that. Some of the projects we're working on, some projects we're still working on and some new facilities that have come about and a little bit on the golf course. I will say on the golf course, we're coming back in October with a pretty detailed presentation on that. But a lot of good things are happening in Parks and Rec for sure. So here's our summer brochure. This is our most anticipated publication of the year. It's direct mailed to 12,500 households. It was intentional to make it look similar to a magazine, so it's a huge hit. More, a lot of people will come by the office that don't, that don't have a city address and ask for copies. So for this brochure, we order more than normal for that. Two of the big, most requested information in our office is the aquatics counter. And the swimming pools open this Saturday. Both pools will open for the summer. And our summer bandstand entertainment. I think Stanton's unique that we have activities at the bandstand every night of the week, all summer long, from Stonewall Brigade, Praise in the Park, Wednesday Night Bluegrass, that's the one the city puts on, and then Jazz, and then we, Friday Night Flicks is ours as well. So what's new in the parks? The new playground addition in Montgomery Hall is a result of Billy Vaughn calling me and informing me of some possible funding, HUD funding for that. That was just finished about a month ago. It's been a huge hit. It's double the size of our play surface at Montgomery Hall. Tons and tons of compliments on that. All right, tennis courts. This is a great project because it's a partnership with Stanton City Schools. They're almost done. We're working on lights now, installing lights, which is new to this. So this is going to be the home of Stanton High School. You can also see the folks in the picture. There's a pickleball court there as well that will get lights. So all these are feel-good projects. Here we go again with the new lighting, actually working on that now. The dog park was finished today. They're going to move to the practice field. Your first picture with the truck is the practice field that we're lighting and then the tennis court. So in my opinion, the dog park, all of them are huge for participation from our citizens. Dog park, after it got dark, you were out. Our biggest request was for lighting at the dog park. Chris, does the dog park one hit the skate park? It does. We put.
Right in the middle, yep.
Yeah, right. And we put, we have two poles at that corner with a rack of light shining on the skate park. Okay. So now we just need to go out and see how bright it is at night, but it's, contractor says it'll be great. So, so this is, we've talked about this during the budget cycle. We're still working on the bathroom renovations with Gypsy Hill. You all know we came in really over what we had budgeted, still working on that and still on Montgomery Hall. Those hopefully will be wrapped up here soon, we hope. And we've had this discussion during the budget cycle too with Moxie. I can tell you what I've done since the last time we've met, met with the Braves, met with the high school, to get what are their priorities and their priorities, both groups is player safety, field condition, the field itself. So we're looking at that. Hopefully soon we'll come back with a recommendation. And I can't say I disagree with them. There's some pretty bad issues out there on the playing surface itself. So that's another one. It's ongoing. This is the one issue that I'm most proud of in the department is the resurgence of Gypsy Hill Golf Course. And the reasoning, the reasoning that if you look at that, every, every one of those categories is up. Revenue's up, rounds played, membership, junior programs, first tee. Women's clinic tournament participation has skyrocketed. We recently had the Stanton High School Boosters Tournament. They had 18 foursomes, which is a fundraiser for the high school. So that's fantastic. We're able now to accommodate more and more tournaments since we acquired the 40 new golf carts. Before those carts, I'm embarrassed to say we were actually renting carts to try to have tournaments. And until we got the carts, people started to realize, hey, they're serious about golf. So there's been a lot more improvements other than, the golf carts are the catalyst to all of it. If you look at this, it's a new marketing logo. So when we got the new carts, we looked at the course. We're getting rid of the old, bringing in the new. For eye appeal, there's new signs. There's a new logo. The new logo, actually the golfers helped pick. We had different scenarios. We did all that in-house. We have product now with shirts and hats. Again, it's fantastic. The course looks like a million bucks. You're there all the time, Mr. Mayor, so.
I just want to say that when we went out there to play in that boosters tournament, there were 70 some golfers that paid $85 to play a round of golf. Now, normally a round of golf at Gypsy Hill is a $25 to $35 round. Depending on one day of the week you play at what time. But people are willing to pay twice as much to support a cause they like. And we had every single group full and it was, it was well worth it. And the boosters walk away with a significant amount of money that they can help and keep their programs going. So it's a win-win situation.
When we have a tournament, we get the cart and green fee. And it's up to the organizer or the civic group or fundraising, if that's what they're using it for, to then adjust their schedule. We get ours, you know, the cart and the green fee, which is great. Really proud of the pro shop updates, new interior, new carpet, new counter. Again, new logo merchandise, new roof. Part of this is if you all remember, two years ago, we had the huge storm in July. Well, unfortunately or fortunately for us, a tree fell on the roof of the pro shop. And we were out of business for I think six weeks, no golf. Everything was shut down because we had over 100 trees down. But the golf, the golf shop, when the tree hit, it flooded the interior. So a lot of that was with insurance money. We had to replace roof. We needed new carpet. We needed paint. So we did. And it's a totally different building. And I got a before and after picture here. There's a picture of the new renovated restroom. So if you look on the left, that's the old, the way it used to look. You know, then next you can see the market difference, the logo on the wall, pro shop. Again, this is one of the highlights and I'm going to give all the credit. I was a player, but there are smarter people than me and one of them was James Corbett, who's was a professional golfer, ran Ingleside for years, played on the tour. He knows the golf business and everything, when we worked out a business plan, is coming true to fruition. So things are, things are looking up. Some of the catalyst was the purchase of the new carts, which led it all. New point-of-sale system, which made it easier for the participant. He can go online. He can see what tee times are available. Those are all, they make it, make it a lot easier for the golfer to show up and participate. New membership pricing, new programs, again, first tee, new senior tees, improved maintenance, and that goes to park maintenance staff. Once we had the carts, the play increased. They stepped up their game. In my opinion, we have the best green superintendent in the business. So key takeaways, like I said earlier, we're going to come back in October with a really detailed report. But our revenues are averaging over 150,000 more per year than our previous 10-year average after the cart purchase. So we're looking at over 500,000 in additional revenue since the implementation of our business plan. We haven't done that well. I mean, it's fantastic. It really is. Golf has taken off. And some of it's the point-of-sale system. Public play continues to rise. Course conditions, that's huge. So again, really proud of the staff that worked on that and making it a reality. I'll try to answer any questions you have, but.
Did you see that? That is pretty.
What do you want me to say? Thank you.
No, I'm impressed with your, your little curtain there. Well, thank you for everything you do.
Little curtain.
May I ask a question? A very short question. Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. It's always exciting. I know everyone's looking forward to it. I just want to encourage anybody who's sitting in the audience tonight or who is listening that the Parks and Rec has a fantastic newsletter, online newsletter. If you don't have to go pick one up, you just sign up. I think on the city website is where I got it. And so it comes in the mail and you can always know what's happening. So thank you for that. It's a great, it's a great service. I also wanted to ask you, Mr. Tuttle, last year we had a lot of folks contacting us about an abbreviated summer swimming schedule. Is that going to be?
It is, as a matter of fact. We've increased that by. So before it was two days or, so now it's Wednesday and Sunday and Tuesday and Thursday. So we increased the time, so.
I'm sorry. So again, so.
It was one day last year. Now it's four.
Four days, four full days. That's wonderful.
Four full days. Well, during a set time from 9:30 to 11:30.
So what is this?
It's adult lap swim.
That'll be, that'll be through till Labor Day?
Yes. Well, until we.
Have guards.
Have guards, yeah. Till we're closed, which historically has been a lot earlier than that. But, but we are going into the season with a full staff.
Yep.
I don't know if you've seen the transition from the pools. Josh did a great job with some videos of, let me take the cover off, to what it looks like now. And it's a lot of labor to get that because it's one of the biggest, if not the biggest pool in the valley. So starting Saturday, we're wide open.
Open for business.
Seven days a week.
And what's the times? 12 to 6:30?
6:30, yep. And it's $3 for Gypsy Hill, two for Montgomery Hall. It's a bargain.
It is a bargain.
It is a bargain. Other questions from counselors? Well, thank you for everything you do.
Glad we survived the trip to Betsy Bell.
Yes, we did survive.
Somebody got seasick.
We appreciate the chauffeur service.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle.
All right, we are going to adjourn the work session, have a quick break.
Okay.
And we'll start at seven o'clock. Three minutes. Time to go to bed. Good evening. Like to call the regular meeting to order of the May 23, 2024 council session. Would everyone please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
Thank you. Tonight's invocation moment of silence will be brought to us by Vice Mayor Darby.
Thank you, Mayor Claffey. This evening I will be doing an invocation that's a Christian prayer. So if you're so inclined and would like to join me, please feel free to do so. Let us bow our heads. As we celebrate this upcoming Memorial Day weekend, let us always remember and never forget the men and women in service to our country who have given the ultimate sacrifice of their lives so that we may be free. Let us pray that God bestows his blessings on the families of the fallen and grant our great nation comfort and peace in the days ahead. Thank you, Father God, for all our many blessings. Thank you for our beautiful city and the opportunities we have here. Guide us as a council this evening and grant each of us wisdom as leaders. In the precious name of your son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. All right, I have a proclamation tonight for the LGBTQ plus Pride Month in the Shenandoah LGBTQ Center. From the center, I have Atu Nguyen and Jen Jones, if you would like to come forward. From the center, I have Atu Nguyen and Jen Jones, if you would like to come forward. Right there. And let me read the proclamation. This is City of Stanton, Virginia proclamation for LGBTQ plus Pride Month and the Shenandoah LGBTQ Center. Whereas our nation was founded on the principle of equal rights for all people, but the fulfillment of this promise is long been incoming for many Americans. And whereas the historical riot at the Stonewall in New York City on June twenty-eighth, nineteen sixty-nine is recognized as the beginning of the modern-day LGBTQ plus civil rights movement. And as a result, June has been celebrated as LGBTQ plus Pride Month nationwide for over fifty years. And whereas everyone should be able to live without fear of prejudice, discrimination, violence, and hatred based on race, ethnicity, religion, class, gender, identity, sexual orientation, age, mental or physical ability. And whereas the fabric of our community is strengthened when we center the values of equity, justice, diversity, acceptance, inclusion, and kindness, not only during this month of recognition, but throughout the year. And whereas Stanton has a diverse LGBTQ plus community and is committed to uplifting the voice and dignity of all people in this community. And whereas the Shenandoah LGBTQ Center of Stanton, Virginia was established in July of two thousand and eighteen by Christopher Wood to address the unique challenges faced by the rural LGBTQ plus community, strengthening it through advocacy, education programs, and safe places. And whereas, consistent with the efforts of the center, the City of Stanton strives to be a community where everyone is celebrated for our differences rather than limited by what might divide us. Now, therefore being proclaimed by Stanton City Council that the entire month of June, two thousand and twenty-four, is hereby designated as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in the City of Stanton. And the council honors the Shenandoah LGBTQ Center and their work to serve the LGBTQ community, encourages the citizens of Stanton to celebrate our diverse community and join in the celebrating the resiliency of LGBTQ plus people for all ages. Adopted this twenty-third day of May, son Stephen W. Claffey, Mayor.
Thank you.
Oh, sure. That would be okay?
Please, please. Yes, please, feel free.
I have a few words, if that's okay.
Yes, great.
Good evening, Mayor Claffey, City Council members and everyone present here. On behalf of the Shenandoah LGBTQ Center, of our Board of Directors and of the staff, please accept our appreciation for this recognition for a month that is so important to many in our Stanton community. It is my biggest honor to be a part of this community and I'm so incredibly proud of the work of the center. We'll be celebrating six years this year. We believe the core of our work is connection, to connect our community to one another and to all of the resources and supports that they might need. Social supports, housing, access to affirming and quality healthcare. Or sometimes just to connect with someone that says, hey, you're not alone. We're here to walk alongside you. To witness and be a part of someone's journey towards authenticity and towards thriving is something that we hold so sacred at the center. And we'll continue to advocate and uplift the stories of our LGBTQ community because they are so important, why Pride Month is so important. Thank you for the opportunity that the city has provided for continued visibility and especially of the opportunity for education. I hope Stanton will continue to build a more inclusive and welcoming space for those still facing prejudice and inequality. We all stand to benefit when that happens. Thank you so much.
All right, that brings me to the mayor's report. Um, well, I'll tell the tale on myself. I did manage to go to my mailbox the other day and I might have been mowing the grass and I might have been on the riding mower. And I might have received in the mail that very day our city tax bill. And it did sort of slip out of my hand and sort of went underneath the lawnmower. And I shredded it into six thousand pieces. And my neighbor drove up the street right at that point and I got off the lawnmower and I'm just laughing, picking up pieces. And she said, what did you do? And I said, I probably did what everybody in the City of Stanton wants to do when they get that tax bill and shred it into a million pieces. But I just wanted you all to know that the tax bills are out. And I, uh, I got mine too. So, uh, be prepared, they're out. I know we had some questions last week when they were coming out and they were officially mailed this week and you should be in receipt of them this week. And that was on a humorous note, but on a sad note, I want to announce that, uh, Wayne Slimhite, uh, passed. A great man from my past. So he was a longtime referee here. And, uh, he did a lot. Other members? I certainly like Wayne, huh, that's for sure. Other members, councillors, notes?
Yes, if that's okay, Mayor Claffey? I do, I just, uh, we, uh, I wanted to bring up that, uh, May is, uh, Stroke Awareness Month. And, uh, we will be giving a proclamation to, uh, the local EMS council. And it's very, very important that we are going to be, um, paying attention to, uh, the Smoke Stroke Smart Virginia Initiative. Uh, Stanton will become a stroke smart city. It's hard to say, I apologize. And why this is so important is because it is a public health initiative to, um, to increase awareness of the signs of stroke, to increase awareness of the resources, the availability of, um, of resources, medical resources in the area. And really what you should do if, if you see somebody exhibiting these signs and if you yourself are feeling these signs. And, um, so I'm excited that next month we will be giving a proclamation to, uh, Daniel Lincoln's, uh, to honor that. And he will tell us more about how we are going to become a stroke smart Stanton.
Say that quickly.
Stroke smart Stanton.
Very good, very good.
Not again.
Anyone else?
The memorial, the Memorial Day service at Gypsy Hill Park on Monday is, um, the American Legion, the VFW, I believe. I think it starts nine-thirty, ten o'clock. Everyone's welcome, so it's a nice service.
That's at the Grandstand?
Yes.
The man's stand, yes. All right, I hope you all can attend, I'm going to be out of town.
I plan on being there.
Anybody else? Councillors? All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. And per, per procedure memorandum number fourteen is the policy of City Council to have routine, non-controversial items placed on a consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be voted on in one motion. If a separate discussion of an item is requested by any member of council, that item shall be removed and considered separately. Do any council members desire to remove any item from the consent agenda to be placed on the regular meeting agenda?
No, sir.
I will entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Mayor Claffey, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion has been made. Second?
I'll second.
Second, uh, Mr. Kessler, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Claffey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Feel like I'm coming to the votes very quickly, uh. We're missing two members of council here tonight, they're on vacation. Councillor Woods, Councillor Robertson are out of town, so that explains why there's only five of us up here. All right, the next item of business is the recognition of the retirement of William Billy L. Vaughn. This time we're going to ask Mr. Vaughn to come forward and I think he might have a few family members. And we're glad to see him, but, uh, we wish you would all come up here so that the abuse can begin.
Oh, my.
A few words are always.
Mr. Mayor, you can go first. You go first, I, I.
No, I'm coming out there to have my picture taken with you in a minute, but I, I want you to have an opportunity for a few comments. And Peggy, great to have you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Sadly, this is my last meeting, uh, in my role as economic development director. Colin, would you start the seventy-five slide presentation?
Perfect.
I had to write down some notes. This will be tough.
I understand.
I have a lot of people to thank. Um, I appreciate everyone who has helped me through the years be successful. Um, I want to thank the support of City Council, this current council, the past council. I want to thank Steve Owen, who convinced me and gave me the opportunity to come home to work. I appreciate the ability and the opportunity. Sorry. To retire, working for a wonderful city and wonderful folks. Um, so many of the city employees have just been great to work with. They've always been so eager to help make whatever we were working on a success. I never had any issues with anyone who would say no. So I applaud all the city employees. Um, want to thank my work family, those that I engage with daily. Uh, I have to call them out and I hate to call people out because I'm going to forget someone, but Kim and Amanda, they kept me on task every day. Um, showing my weakness here. None of the city's success in economic development would have been possible without the staff, City Council, EDA, and the citizens and their support. Uh, finally, I want to thank my wonderful wife, Peggy. For, for all the years she's been there, she's supported me in every step of the way in my wonderful career. I can't forget my children, uh, that are there tonight. Their spouses, better halves, uh, for their support, being there for me. And the wonderful grandkids they provided us that we're truly enjoying. I will miss all of you. God bless and don't call me.
All right, don't be running off. No, 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 we're not letting you run off, Billy. Come on up here to the front. Could you ask your family to come up for a photo op and can we, uh, present? Come on over.
Telling us where to stand, is there some?
All right, let me be a giddy. Like something's up.
There you go.
Thanks, Chris. Kim, Rodney, Chad, man.
You can't leave now.
Yes, I do. Enjoy. We're going to miss him, that's for sure. All right, the next item on the agenda is the public hearing in consideration of an ordinance to increase and modify Augusta Regional landfill fees. Ms. Berger?
Uh, Ms. Jessie Moyers is going to handle this item. I know she has a PowerPoint, well, for this and the next two items because she also has the next two.
Next, yeah, three items total.
Three in a row, so she's gonna.
Kind of hard to follow, Billy, though.
Well, I was going to say, well.
Well, all right, we don't have to roast Jessie, do we?
Oh, yeah.
Ever.
Okay, so this item is about the landfill tipping fees for the Augusta Regional landfill. They have not been raised in seventeen years, so it's well overdue. Um, and what happens is that the city has to subsidize commercial haulers when we have extremely low tipping fees. Um, and even with the increase, um, we're going to remain the lowest in the area. Um, for those surrounding landfills around us. I heard that Rocketham will be increasing to fifty-eight dollars July first. Um, our proposed increase is going from forty-five dollars to fifty-two dollars. Um, this was approved by unanimous vote by the landfill committee February twenty-second. It does require a public hearing, which we will hold right after my comments. And I just wanted to state that this does not affect our customers' bi-weekly utility bill. It will affect them if they decide to take their tires to the landfill instead of leaving them at the shop or it will affect the commercial shops that haul tires to landfill instead of getting them recycled. Um, there is a new charge for freon-bearing appliances because it is so expensive to remove that freon from the appliance before it's discarded and that will be twelve dollars. Um, but you will still have the option to put it out on heavy, um, trash pickup and there will be no charge at that time. So overall, this will result in about ninety-two thousand dollars of additional re- revenue from the, for the City of Stanton, which comes in the form of reducing, um, the fee that we pay for the landfill. And that is all I had on the landfill. You have any questions before we?
Questions from councillors?
Um, Ms. Moyers, I assume that the landfill committee, they'll evaluate these fees each year and determine if additional adjustments need to be made based on what, what trends occur after this increase?
It is my hope that we don't wait another seventeen years and yes, that we do that more often.
I'm on that board, yes, we will. Yes.
Yeah.
So who all makes up that board?
Uh, it's myself and, uh, Tim Fitzgerald, County Administrator Augusta County, Mike Camp, City Manager, Wayne Burrow. Um, I'm the finance, are you technically on the board?
I'm not sure if I'm technically.
Okay, finance folks, um, from Augusta, um.
In Wayne's Borough, yeah.
In Wayne's Borough and Augusta County and the Augusta Water. Um, Phil Martin, who's the Director of Augusta Water, I think that's it. I don't think I missed.
So were we just lucky that we were able to get by for these last seventeen years? Or were we? Or were we offering steadily less services, et cetera? Because that landfill is incredibly well-run wherever I'm there.
Yeah. I don't know how to answer that. I, I, I'm not sure why it took so long to actually look at the fees. It was just time to do it. The, the landfill director was starting to see some trends in terms of, you know, things that were happening at the landfill, what was being brought to the landfill. Like, for instance, tires was a big issue where tires were coming to the landfill that should have been taken to recycling centers instead of the landfill. We were a better deal than that. So we needed to increase our price to kind of discourage that type of behavior so that the tires would actually go to a recycling center rather than to the landfill. So hopefully that will offset some of that. So he just started to see some trends in the last couple of years, and so finally it was time to address it. But as, as Ms. Moyers said, it wouldn't, it won't affect if you're a citizen. You want to drop off your brush or your trash or your big items, that's fine. You will be able to do that as you do now.
Right, well, I was there today, as a matter of fact, dropping off some brush, yeah.
Doing the same thing, so it is, it is a wonderful service. If you haven't been out there, it's kind of fun.
It's amazing.
It is an amazing service that we offer.
And if you see all that pile of mulch they have out there that wasn't there a month ago, I mean, it is a mountain bigger than this building. It's unbelievable, and it, it'll be gone another couple of weeks, and they'll, they'll start working at it from the other side. It, it's incredible how they continue to work it. Question, let's say, you know, a lot of Augusta County sanitation garbage pickup is done by private companies. So let's say you have somebody in, yeah, let's say that's working the border area up there between Weir's Cave and where Rockingham County goes. So if he has a choice of going to the Rockingham County and paying fifty-four dollars a ton or driving down to Stanton and paying fifty-two, is that what it's going to be?
Rockingham will be fifty-eight and will be fifty-two.
So what's to stop him from doing that if he? Is it restricted to Augusta County and Stanton? And Waynesboro? Or if you're a commercial garbage collector in an area like, well, what, Bridgewater? Bridgewater might be right there on the border, you know? Some of it's Augusta County, some of it's going to be Rockingham County. What's to stop?
There's a process that they go to to set up the commercial account with the landfill, and I would assume they would vet them at that point.
Yeah, I think they, they register those accounts, so that, yeah, there is a process.
Because, I mean, I get waved in when I come in.
Right, you just say city of Stanton, and they'll, and you go in on the residential side.
Correct.
Correct, yeah. But they, they verify the commercial side of that.
As to where they're registered?
I, I believe so, yes, yes. So they have a process that does that.
About a year or two ago where they gave you a number.
They used to have stickers, I think, that would.
We got talked about going back to that, I thought.
Yeah, because right now, if you don't have a sticker, they just.
Yeah, but they used to look at it. I mean, they wanted to see it if you didn't have it on your.
Okay.
And they're talking about returning to that so that they don't have to stop the car and ask them what locality they're from.
Yes.
I mean, anecdotally, in, in construction, there've been companies that wanted to find ways to use ours instead of others. I, I don't, you don't know how they exactly did that, maybe just based on some other address on it, but we were so far behind the curve on pricing that it became preferable, even with fuel increase.
Easier to come down here, right?
Keep her, yeah.
All right. We need a public hearing on this individual, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. All right, any other questions from council? In a moment, I will open up the public hearing. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a specific topic, which in this case will be the ordinance to increase and modify Augusta Regional landfill fees. I am now going to open the public here. Would anyone like to speak on this public hearing concerning the Augusta Regional landfill fees? Mr. Kessker, is there anyone on the phone?
No, sir, I have no one with their hand raised.
Going twice, would anybody like to speak? I'm now going to close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion on the Augusta Regional landfill fees.
Mayor Claffey, I may that city council adopt an ordinance to increase and modify fee, fees charged at the Augusta Regional landfill effective as of July first, twenty twenty-four, as proposed.
Motion has been made by Councilor Campbell. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Edwards. Mr. Kessker, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Arrowood, aye. Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for an ordinance to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget ordinance for the city of Stanton by adding budget amendment number three. Ms. Bogart.
Turn it right back over to Ms. Moyers.
Right. So this should be our last budget amendment of FY twenty-four. We had it down to three this year, so that's much better than last year.
I'm impressed.
Yes.
So the city side, this is going to sound like a very large budget amendment, but it's not really that large. The, the biggest part of it is coming from moving the courthouse construction out of the CIP fund and into the bond fund. And that's, that's what we did with the high school construction. It's just easier to keep that all in one fund by itself with the bond funds. So that's the biggest part of the number. So the city portion of this is thirty-seven million, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven oh eight. And included in that is the general fund for three million, eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, six seventy-one. That includes the opioid settlement money that we've received since the last budget amendment of one oh nine, one ninety-seven. Recovered cost of a little over twelve thousand, that's insurance claims. Library grant of twenty-five, five eleven. Now, that is actually for the circuit court. It's for item conservation, so I don't want you to think it's a library grant. That's just what they call it for the circuit court. Virginia Comp Board funds, three thousand, six oh three. U.S. Marshall grant of twenty thousand. The next one is a negative because it's an adjustment to the DCJS grant. Beadout reimbursable funds, little over a million dollars. Parks and Rec donations of five thousand. Unassigned fund balance. We had talked about this earlier. This is two thousand, five seventy-one, fifty. And it's made up of a transfer to the CIP for two million, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, fifty dollars. You'll see on the next slide what makes up that number. And then three hundred and fifty thousand will go to the bond fund for the JDR project. So included in this is also two transfers. This is not appropriation of new revenue. But we had excess health department money this year because the cost of that came in lower than when we had budgeted by about sixty-three thousand. So Leslie and I thought this was a good time to take that excess money for the health department, put it in the CIP to help go toward the roof replacement of the health department. It's going to be more than sixty-three, but we just thought that was a good use of leftover budget in the health department line. And then they transferred to cover the local share of the housing planner and grants coordinator that is not covered by the HUD funds. So the capital improvements fund is three million, five hundred and seventy-four thousand, one seventy-seven. That's a transfer from the general fund of almost two point three million. The one point four is the rest of the twenty-four CIP, which is made up of the reserves. This is one we delayed the decision on and decided not to do it in January because we needed to make sure our courthouse bids were going to come in around estimates, and they came in a little bit lower, so that's good. Three hundred thousand is for the JDR startup cost. We're setting aside five hundred thousand additional for the animal shelter renovations. They came in over budget. They have been working to reduce them, that amount. They've been able to shave off a hundred and fifty thousand, I mean, one point five million, sorry, from that contract. But this is our share of the overage. And then you'll see the sixty-three thousand come in for the health department roof into the CIP. And it was it then. We will add to it until we're ready to do the replacement. We have a little over one point one million dollars in CIP interest income that we've been able to earn on our funds that are sitting in the CIP. Some of this is our local reserves that we set aside, and some of it is ARPA funding that is sitting there waiting to be spent. We are setting aside this money for Parks and Rec's public facility reserve. We don't know exactly at this time what we'll use it for, but it's going to that reserve for future use for parks.
And how long has it been since you transferred that money into the higher interest-bearing account?
We did that in August.
So we're ten, ten months old, I should say.
Yes, and we've been able to earn across all funds a little over three million dollars.
That's great.
We're earning about five and a half percent in our VIP account, the Virginia investment accounts. And we have about forty-five million in there, and then we have some in a money market account.
Thank you for doing it.
So that is wonderful to see. And we've also been able to do things in the general fund, and the schools have their own CIP money that they've been able to buy activity buses with. So it's, it's really great environment with the interest rates right now. And then we have a call handling grant in the CIP fund of a hundred and fifty thousand. And then these are transfers, not an appropriation of new revenue. We're taking the seven hundred and nineteen thousand that's in the jail reserve and moving it to the courthouse project. This was our, one of our things that we need to do to keep the term of that bond to a fifteen-year term and to reduce how much we're borrowing. And there is no talk of expansion at this point, and the five-year capital plan for the jail is covered with their fund balance. So we're going to use this for our immediate needs and not hold on to it. And then the next two lines, those are, that's money that we've already appropriated that's sitting in the CIP fund, and all we're doing is moving it to the bond fund. It's about three point four million dollars of local funding for the courthouse project and about three and a half of ARPA funding. And then the next line is about a hundred and forty-one thousand. That is money that we had set aside for ARPA for the moxie design. We did a PAR. We did not do a full design. And we are going to move that ARPA funding to the courthouse project and take the local money equivalent and put it into that Parks and Rec utility facilities reserve, public use facilities reserve. Just because there's no desire to push that full design right now, and we have to encumber these funds by December thirty-first.
Right.
The bond fund, twenty-seven million, three hundred and forty-four thousand, four ninety-two. The bond, the proceeds from the issuance between the par value and the bond premium is about eighteen point eight million dollars. We'll net about eighteen point five to go toward the project after the bond cost. Our estimated bond interest that we're going to earn, that we're going to earn is about five hundred thousand. And then there is a transfer from the city CIP fund. Those are the two amounts that you saw on the previous slide, the ARPA funding and the local funding. The community development fund is two hundred and twenty-two thousand, one ninety-six. That's the brownfields grant. The grants fund, a hundred and sixty-five, two oh two. That is almost a hundred and sixty-three thousand for the DCJS grant and almost three thousand for the VDCJJS grant. HUD funding, almost one point one million. Thirty thousand of that is being transferred in from the general fund. That's to pay for the coordinator, the share, share of her time that is not HUD-funded, that's, she spends doing local projects. And then you see the grant funding for HUD and the details listed below for one million, sixty thousand, nine eighty-four. Blue Ridge Court Services, they have a small grant for four thousand, six ninety-one. And then Stormwater, we need to appropriate this SLAF grant that we received for Cole Avenue, eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, two seventy-four. And then that brings us to schools. Their, their share of this budget amendment is three hundred and seventy thousand, one sixty-one with thirty-seven thousand, ninety-one for education, which includes donations of a little over six thousand and recovered costs of almost thirty-one thousand. School CIP fund, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight seventy. This is the interest income that they're going to put in their undesignated fund for now of two hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine sixty-two. And this is after that we appropriated interest income to buy the two activity buses, so they have earned some, some good interest in their CIP account. And then that's the hundred thousand dollar transfer from the city CIP that was part of the FY twenty-four capital plan. They received additional school security equipment grant for seven thousand, nine oh eight. And then they have some transfers also that are not appropriation of new funds, just using some of their undesignated funds to cover accounts that have been overspent in the CIP fund. And then the school cafeteria fund, one thousand, two hundred, five hundred thousand, five hundred dollars is a donation, and seven hundred is a small grant that they received. And so that brings us to the end of the budget amendment. Do you have any questions?
On the previous page, under the HUD fund, we had a million, ninety-one thousand. There were grants dating back twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and I believe at a previous meeting, we had, we had a discussion that some of that funds had not been specified and spent in prior years. Is this all of it? Is this?
That is everything that is.
You have cleaned out the account, in other words.
So this is money that we have to reappropriate because it was in fund balance, and we just bring it back to. Yes. Some of it is for the West Beverly sidewalk project. I believe some were waiting on Habitat, I believe, maybe?
Yeah, the HUD grants for A Street.
Yeah.
Right. So it gets us, we don't have any.
So it's not sitting there.
There are no more unspecified funds sitting out there that we have to be concerned about.
In HUD?
Yes.
Right.
I believe we have a plan for everything, right, Leslie?
As far as I know, we do. We can get that information to you all, though, and I know Ms. Joyce will be back. I think in July, or no, maybe June, to talk about the annual action plan. So we'll make sure she can address those questions at that meeting as well.
Because that was one of the questions when she gave her original proposal. There was a lot of loose ends that hadn't been covered.
Yeah, I think those are getting wrapped up when she presents the annual action plan, and I think it's next month. We'll make, that will be part of that discussion as well. We'll make sure she touches on all of that for you all. Yep.
But these numbers look like they're the majority of what we had issues with back in the, in, was it last August?
August, September.
Yeah, last fall. Okay, very good. That's all the questions I have. Anybody else have it?
Some of those HUD funds went toward the Montgomery Hill playground, isn't that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So some of it was already spent, so. No, sir.
Questions from councillors? All right, once again, I'm going to open up the public hearing. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens about a specific topic. And in this case, it will be for the amending of the twenty twenty-four budget ordinance, budget amendment number three. I am now going to open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on the public hearing pertaining to this subject matter? Mr. Kessker, do I have anyone on the phone?
No, sir, I have no one with their hand raised.
Looks is your opportunity. All right, seeing no, the public hearing is now closed, and I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, there's no motion required.
No motion at all. All right, good. Now we get to go on to the consideration of a resolution to allow Metro River Regional Jail Authority to refinance its two thousand and fourteen jail facility revenue refunding bonds. Ms. Bogart.
Moyers. Promises of the last time you'll see me.
Last time.
Welcome.
So it's been ten years since they issued this bond, and so now we're at the ten-year call period. The important thing to point out is it does not extend the term of the bond. It does not extend the principal amount borrowed of the bond. This is purely to save interest. Davenport, their financial advisor, did an analysis and determined that based on the current market rates, they could save one point one million dollars. And Stanton's share of that would be two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars over the next approximately eight years. So as far as I'm concerned, there are no negatives. The only negative is if we hold out longer, will the rates go down, and we could save even more money? But then you're losing late-time value of money. So the final maturity is twenty thirty-two. The remaining amount on the bond is thirteen million, eighty-five thousand. And they would participate in the VRA summer pool, which I think they already have about five participants, so I don't believe there's any issue that that pool will not take place. Like I said, it does not increase the time or the amount borrowed. This is only so that they can reduce the interest on that loan.
And what is most of this thirteen million dollars? What, what projects are we talking about?
It was major capital renovations. It was, uh, major capital renovations that they did approximately like ten years ago when they issued in twenty fourteen. I don't know the list of projects. I believe it was like a kitchen renovation and just, just an expansion.
I can't recall.
I think it's, uh, maybe about a hundred facilities.
Yeah, right.
And so.
Go ahead.
So Jesse, everyone has to vote on this, right?
So once. Yes, all localities have to vote. I believe they have three of the five that have already voted to accept it. We are tonight, and I don't know when the final one, if it's taking place this week or early next week. But they needed all the votes in, um, in June so that they could finalize the, the refunding.
Because it's a significant amount of money to be saved.
Yeah.
Million dollars over eight years, I think.
Yeah.
Yes.
So. Seems like a no brainer.
Yep.
No questions?
Questions?
I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Claffey, I move that the city council approve the resolution authorizing Middle River Regional Jail to refinance its two thousand and fourteen jail facility review refunding bonds.
I have a motion by. Vice Mayor Darby, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second of, uh, Counselor Arrowhead, Mr. Kessler, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowhead.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is a consideration of an ordinance amending, restating and reordaining section five point oh five point one eight oh Alcohol Beverages, Chapter five point oh five Business Professional Occupation and Other License Tax, Article Three Other Licenses and Taxes of Title Five Business License and Regulations of the Stanton City Code. And I see our city attorney is already ready to go. Welcome.
Go ahead, Mr. Blair.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Before you tonight is an amendment that has been made to the state code regarding two different aspects of alcoholic beverages and how they relate to license fees in the city. Well, I should say licenses as to the tax on the license. Um, one is for designated outdoor refreshment areas. And the other is actually a reduction in fee for temporary marketplace licenses, which are six months or less for a business that does not primarily serve alcohol as its business. And just to let you know, we have Virginia's best commissioner of the revenue here.
Oh.
In case she, uh, in case you have any technical questions.
Thought she was going to say some alcoholic beverages.
Thank you.
Yeah, Maggie, I'd love to talk, Ms. Reagan, sorry.
Good evening. What question's going to answer for you?
You know, I was reading this, thank you for, for answering. I was reading this and I was getting a little bit confused about exactly how it would be used. We would switch to a possibly a system where we would allow people to have, like, open up the entire street and people to buy alcohol in a restaurant and then walk up and down the street, for example.
Sure, so let me just get back to the beginning. It might make a little bit more sense if I could. So, uh, Chapter Four of the state code has a fee associated with each of the privileged licenses that are issued by the ABC to, um, businesses across the Commonwealth that serve alcoholic beverages. Then there's a second, um, piece of that chapter that sets out local corresponding fees. So it's a fee that the locality can enact by ordinance to administer the local portion of, uh, basically what we do to work with the ABC for compliance issues, okay? So we have this local fee structure. The fees set out by the state in Chapter Four have changed this year. They have an update going into effect July first, and they've added some categories. So I went to Mr. Blair and asked him if he would add those corresponding categories to our local fees. And our local fees are administered as part of our business license process. And one of those was the, um, the, what they call a DORA, the Designated Outdoor Refreshment Area. So what that is, is it is, it would allow a nonprofit or the locality to, um, create a designated area. So for example, if you wanted to have all of Beverly Street blocked off for that purpose during Stanton jams, then a, uh, an individual could go into any currently licensed establishment and purchase an alcoholic beverage and then go out into the designated area and consume it without having to be on the premises of the establishment where they purchased the beverage. The sixty dollar fee that goes along with that permit is, i- i- is, um, if you have, if the same entity does it fewer than sixteen times per year and the, the event cannot have a duration of longer than three days. If you exceed those thresholds, the fee goes up to six hundred dollars a year. This is, so this is not something that we have currently in effect. It just puts it on our books in the event that at some point someone ever wanted to take advantage of it. And then there are a couple of other changes, but that was kind of the one that probably needed the most explanation as far as category. Other questions?
That was the one I had.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Play it out. And using Stanton jams as an example is a good example.
Right. It's, it's, it's used for things like big, you know, when cities have big festivals and they want to have people be able to move around in a, in a, you know, specific area without having to say, okay, I just bought this, you know, glass of wine at Blue Point, but I can't walk down the street to hear the stage. I'm, I have to stay on their premises. Because when we do dine out for downtown, they have their own little areas that they rope off because that's there, included in their current license.
Right.
Now, wasn't part of the provision of this that you couldn't, you can't cross a road with it, or, or there was some, there was some part of that where it would have to be entirely shut down?
It has to be, so i- if the, if the road, the road would have to be shut to be part of the area. In other words, you couldn't cross, you know, you couldn't have people, vehicles and, and people walking through.
So dine out would be blocks.
You would, no, you would have to shut the whole thing. And, and you would not have, be able to have traffic going through at Augusta Street and Central Avenue and whatever. You would have to, you know, that would all have to be like inside of, you know, the orange fence type thing that they used to do for.
But then like with, with the bollards on either end of it, you could say this area, not that. So that would be a interesting, interesting thing to explain to visitors. But I don't know. Nothing simple with ABC.
There is.
And, and it's not, you know, I mean, like I said, this is not saying we have to do this at any point.
All right.
He's going to do it. It's just, it's just, I'm just making sure that the city code aligns with the state code so that we don't ever get in a situation where we've got to hurry up and enact something because somebody has to do it.
Yeah. This is one I think, I think all of us sought explanation.
Yeah.
Correct, because I saw the six hundred dollar versus the sixty dollar fee. And I thought we were going to hold somebody, you know, to a ten times fee, but it's, it's a whole different ballgame.
It has nothing to do with, with a, with a regular restaurant license or regular establishment licenses, just for these types of special events.
Very good.
So, yeah. Anything else?
Questions?
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll read it.
You read it.
Okay. I move the city council authorize the ordinance amending, re- restating and reordaining section five point oh five point one eight oh Alcohol Beverages, Chapter five point oh five Business Professional Occupation and Other License Taxes, Article Three Other Licenses and Taxes of Title Five Business Licenses and Regulations of the Stanton City Code to align with changes to the Code of Virginia as enacted by the General Assembly.
And I think whoever seconds that has to repeat it.
We'll just read it again.
Motion, motion has been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. All right, Mr. Kessler, could you call the roll?
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowhead.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, that brings us to slide MG, which is a consideration of a memorandum of understanding established the Stanton Augusta Regional Drug and Gang Enforcement Task Force. Ms. Bogart.
Okay, I think Mr. John Blair is going to handle this one as well.
Just.
Busy.
Welcome. Welcome. Thank you. Who needs a drink after making that motion?
Water over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor and Council, um, I'm going to just briefly introduce this and talk about it from a legal perspective. And Captain Brown from Stanton PD is here to talk, I think, more about the operational component. But in Virginia, there is, as you know, we have independent cities surrounded by counties. They're independent jurisdictions. Given that, um, unless a governing body of a city consents, which is before you tonight, it can be in the form of a memorandum of understanding, it can be a simple motion. There are a number of ways this can occur, but, um, effectively a county police off, a county sheriff's deputy can't come into the city of Stanton and execute an arrest or perform law enforcement activities. Now, there are limited exceptions. I know cities can only go one mile out of their jurisdiction if they're in pursuit, for instance. But that's not what we're talking about. And in order for an Augusta County police officer, if they were part of a regional drug task force, to have the authority to make an arrest within the city of Stanton, you need to adopt, and again, before you tonight is this memorandum of understanding, which would give them the authority to execute the arrest. And that's the legal part, but I know Captain Brown can probably explain better the operational part and why Chief Williams feels like this drug task force is necessary.
Welcome.
Mayor, members of council. Thank you. Um, so just, I'll give you a little brief history of kind of like how we got to this point. So in September of twenty twenty-three, the Virginia State Police informed us that they were going to back out of the regional task force that was established here in our area. Originally, state police, uh, Stanton, Augusta, Waynesboro, Waynesboro had exited out some years prior to that. The state police decided to exit out, and that was in September. We've been a part of that task force for sixteen years. And part of that, they swore in our officers. I was actually a part of that task force at one point in time. You were sworn in through the state police to investigate narcotic related crimes. In January of twenty twenty-four, we still recognize the importance of having a cooperative agreement with our, uh, area partners in that, um, task, uh, for narcotic investigations. So we started, started working on this memorandum. We got the attorneys involved. So in talking with Jeff Gaines and, um, John Blair, um, John Blair's been, uh, super supportive and helping us, uh, move through this process. We were still working, so there's a code fifteen two seventeen twenty-four, which gives us authority to go beyond our territorial limits to investigate narcotics crimes, immediate threats to public safety, uh, mental health related issues, and then natural disasters. So we've kind of been operating under that, but the problem with that is, let's say we don't have, our officers aren't available. And all of a sudden, they are, it's the information received about narcotics coming into the city that they need to act on. We either have to rally some resources who are not used to investigating that type of crime or allow Augusta County to go ahead and act on that information. Same goes for our officers. So what this agreement does, it allows for those occurrences. You can also see in the MOU just how many integral parts go into investigating narcotics. Just between evidence and storage, we had this, you know, establishing where that's going to be, how that's going to be handled, forfeitures that are taken in during those, how that's going to be handled. So it just gives us a lot of rules, um, to operate by and gives us as, uh, department heads and the chief, an ability to kind of control that, um, in that agreement. We have a similar situation that in, uh, two thousand and six that council approved. That was when we had started a gang task force that was kind of working in conjunction with the narcotics task force, but they weren't sworn in through the state police. And so a lot of the, this is already in that two thousand and six agreement. Commonwealth Attorney Gaines didn't think that that was solid enough, included enough of the violations that he was looking for, for Augusta County to be able to prosecute if it came into the city. And so that's why we are asking for that motion this evening.
So this is strictly a, uh, agreement between Stanton and Augusta County, and Waynesboro is not involved.
They are not involved.
Is Augusta County involved in a similar type of arrangement with Waynesboro?
They are not. Waynesboro is currently not part of any regional task force.
Is Augusta County getting their board of supervisors to approve the same type of MOU?
They are not required to. The code only requires that a locality that's established a law enforcement agency to do that. In Augusta County, the sheriff has the authority.
Right.
That's it.
Right.
Got it.
Okay. Makes sense.
I guess my only other question is.
I still have a question, yeah.
Go ahead.
It's, it's really, it, the purpose is more of a narcotic investigation type base, correct? I mean, it's listed as gang enforcement. Is there any, any particular reason?
But you said that was to clean up previous agreement?
To clean up previous.
The previous agreement that was focused more towards gang kind of thing. Okay. And so when, let's say in Augusta County Police Off, Sheriff, I'm sorry, Deputy Sheriff is going to be coming into Stanton or a Stanton PD is going to be going into the county to pursue what they think or know is someone involved in gang related activity or narcotics trade, not being in that, that world, how, how, how does, how does the officer know? And how do you communicate that to the, to the other locality? I mean, are you watching people and you see a crime? Do you mind playing that out for us?
So typically, you're going to have that information ahead of time to know where you're going to be and what's going to take place. The only need for communication would be is if Stanton isn't there or Augusta County isn't there. And so then the communication is as normal. Those officers are communicating to our shift commanders and their officers are communicating to their shift commanders or their emergency communication center as to what's going on or what's about to go. But they know, and we will know, that if they're going into any other jurisdiction.
It's for that reason.
They need to contact to the supervisor on duty and let them be, make them aware of what's going on. And they usually need patrol there anyway, so they have to do that. Yep.
And just to follow that up, one thing that the Commonwealth's attorney and, and maybe Captain Brown can follow up with an example that, uh, concerned him about the previous agreement. And again, part of this cleanup is if you look at section three point five, it talks about the authority to arrest and it says, the final clause, if a criminal offense is committed in the officer's presence while the officer is performing task force operations. And that's sort of important because effectively sometimes a task force officer, it may not be a, they may be on the scene and he or she may see a, an offense that's committed right in front of them. But they don't have the authority if it's not narcotics or gang related. I don't, I don't know if you have a good example?
I mean, you explained that very well. If they're, you know, they're on scene and all of a sudden something happens and we're all, you know, all of Stanton is inside the house and Augusta County is outside and sees a crime that just occurred, they wouldn't be able to act on that without getting us involved. And so he just felt it was better, um, to give them a little bit more authority and not tie their hands if something major happened while they were on scene with us.
Very good. Any other questions from councilors? I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Claffey, I move that the city council approve the memorandum of understanding establishing the Stanton Augusta Regional Drug and Gang Enforcement Task Force and authorize Chief Jim Williams to sign the memorandum of understanding on behalf of the city of Stanton.
Thank you. Motion has been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Edwards. Mr. Kessler.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Leads our regular portion of the meeting that brings us to matters from the city manager, Ms. Bogart.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few items to talk about tonight. First, this is National Public Works Week. And we've been celebrating all of our public works employees this week. And the national week celebrates the men and women across the country who provide and maintain our infrastructure and advance the quality of life for all. We have a wonderful team in Stanton that designs, maintains and executes everything from water treatment to traffic lights, trash collection, and so much more. This week we've been celebrating with daily lunches and desserts, and we hope all our community can continue to show gratitude for their important work. It was a lot of fun this week. Uh, this weekend is Memorial Day and I just want to read off some of the changes and schedules to city hours and facilities. So Memorial Day is Monday. Beverly Street will actually remain open an extra day for shop and dine out and the bollards will be removed 7:30 AM Tuesday morning instead of Monday morning. If you have your trash picked up on Monday, it'll get picked up on Wednesday. The downtown district will have trash collection on Tuesday and Wednesday with, with normal pickup the remaining days of the week. The recycling center will be closed on Monday to reopen on Tuesday and the library will actually be closed Sunday and Monday, resuming normal hours on Tuesday. Uh, and of course, these offices in city hall will be closed on Monday and will resume on Tuesday. In tourism news, last weekend, the tourism department partnered with Virginia Tourism's Canadian division to host a Canadian travel writer to Stanton and the Shenandoah Valley. They had a great experience while here in Stanton and we're looking forward to that publication. This week is also National Travel and Tourism Week. And we've been celebrating with, with each of our hotels and attractions with desserts and these really cool boxes that look really neat and have a neat, uh, kind of image of Stanton on them. And so we just want to celebrate their outstanding dedication and hospitality. And finally, a reminder that the next council meeting is not until June 27th. At the last meeting, city council canceled two summer meetings. The first cancellation will be the first meeting in June, so we will be back here in a month. And that is all I have to this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that brings us to matters from the public. This, this part of the city council's agenda is entitled matters from the public and it's time for, the council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a wide variety of subjects. A copy of the Stanton City Council Matters from the Public rules are available on paper form at the clerk's desks or online. You are asked to familiarize yourself with these rules before commenting. Please come to the podium or begin your call, identify yourself and complete your remarks within five minutes. I will now open the floor to matters from the public. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, Cindy Connors, 106A Skyline Avenue. I hope you'll indulge me in talking about the food drive just one more time.
Please.
Why not? I wanted to, uh, first just thank you all because your help in advertising makes a huge difference. And thank you, uh, to Counselor, um, Campbell and Woods for actually helping to come and pick up the food that day, uh, put a little elbow grease into it too. It's very much appreciated. Um, so our final total that the, um, on the city's website said, uh, 15,140 pounds. It's actually 15,160 because we got 20 more pounds this week. Um, but, uh, so we appreciate that being on the website and that's up from 8,600 last year. So just absolutely an incredible showing. Uh, I'm, I'm just ecstatic, overflowing, um, with thanks. And I also, the, the Blue Ridge, I thought you might be curious about this, the Blue Ridge Area Food Bank in its jurisdiction, um, which is of course more than Stanton, um, we collected 90,967 pounds of food. That's great.
That's awesome.
So that's really incredible. And that, and they equate that to 76,000 meals. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Cindy, for everything.
Thank you for everything you do. Welcome.
Well, thank you for having this opportunity for, I am Jeffrey Jones and I am from 202 North Madison. And I wanted to convey to you all our appreciation, first of all, for the great, as I call them, the trash cats who come down our road every Friday morning at 7:15, so don't be late. And they're wonderful and they're very, very polite and loving and caring and they care about little things. And I want to thank that, first of all, out in the public. I also want to thank you all for, I think, I'm not enough information in my back pocket on this, but, uh, there has been a great outpouring of, I think, a reviewing of our street and having it begin to be looked at, to be maneuvered, to be where we can maneuver better on it. And, uh, last couple of weeks ago, I saw two gentlemen from the city of Stanton, I guess Public Works. They had white shirts on, they looked very, very important and they had city trucks, so whatever they're doing. They got out and they looked around and they, and they looked at the gutters and they looked at the, the poor streets and they just shook their heads and they looked at their pieces of paper and they, and I thought to myself, I wish I had a, you know, something to listen to what they were saying because it looked like they were really going to begin to maybe dig a hole. And so I was really excited. So I wanted to come tonight to say, we want to go ahead and make sure we're not forgotten. We're still having bad tires. We're still having hard times getting out of our cars and we are still hoping and we are still looking forward to having our road serviced and brought back up to code and speed and, and all of that. Because you know, it's, it's, it's like this and we need to make it as easy as possible for us older people. So I wanted to make sure I just brought in my two cents and, uh, and, and said that to you guys and I appreciate all the public works. They're great guys and great gals. So thank you all. I withdraw.
Yep.
What he said, but.
Oh, Stephanie, you can speak to.
I'm Stephanie Borner. Um, we just wondered what the status of scheduling is. We know the funds don't kick in till July. And is there any schedule?
If you can give me your contact information, I will get back to you. I'll get back to you on that if you can give me your contact information. Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Welcome.
Mayor, Council, my name's Barry Gibson. I do not live in the city. Uh, however, I am here in reference to a complaint about someone having beehives on their property within city limits. Honeybeads are the world's primary pollinators for cultivating crops, one third of the human diet, 15 billion increase in crop values provided from these pollinators. They provide us with food, pollen and beeswax. It takes 12 bees lifetime to make one teaspoon of honey and 55,000 miles of flying to make one jar. Uh, being a beekeeper and a veteran myself, I'm retired Navy corpsman that served 16 years with the Marine Corps, for the rest with the Navy. Please know that we veterans know how important it is to follow orders, rules, regulations and codes because sometimes it can cause grave consequences. So we do live by the letter. Let us look at some of these city codes that supposedly have been enacted on. First of all, I cannot find anywhere in the coding that states if it's not listed as a permitted use, then it's not allowed. There are lists that permitted uses and list of prohibited uses. And it's not on either one. So where does it fall in? According to the definitions in the city code 6.0510, animal means non-human vertebrate species. These are insects. They don't have vertebrates. That's in align with Virginia state code of 3.2, tac 6522 and tac 6570. Please note every time I mention the word animal, it refers to this definition. So when the animal control officer comes out to address the situation, they have no jurisdiction. They're not animals according to your definition. All right? Bees are found at large, not just in hives. If the person filing this complaint truly thinks that they can distinguish the bee that was on their piece of property came from a hive next door, I'll pay for those hives to be moved. We don't mark our bees except for the queen. Bees fly at random. They are a natural resource. That's one of the things that this city prides itself on is conserving and preserving our natural resources. How many apiaries are within three miles? That's a flight pattern of one honeybee. Minimum of two, not counting the ones we don't know about. Again, can't fall under the wild and exotic animals because of the word animal. It's a vertebrate, doesn't count. Uh, permitted principal uses and accessory uses and structures are one, two and three are, are zoning. The only part in there about agriculture or crops and they cannot be sold. Bees can be considered livestock. So it is an agricultural type of situation. Also reviewing your, uh, chapter 18, point 120, yard building setbacks and open space exceptions, principal uses without buildings, where permitted for the land use involved, no structures, use excluding agricultural uses. So it tells me everything I can do, but it doesn't pertain to agriculture. If I look at prohibited uses, it lists a lot of things about animals, fowl, no bees are mentioned, community garden that y'all have a, a special section for. How is it getting pollinated if we can't have bees? We can't pick and choose which ones of these to enforce. Let's look at some of the others. When there is a, um, purchase to put housing, there's a plan. That company or individual is required to pave streets, provide sidewalks, trees every 50 feet. Property we're talking about that has never been done. It was owned by three different companies for development and First Street is still treed. So according to code under chapter 1720 required improvements, were they approved not to build these roads or these sidewalks? The reason I say that is because if I put a house there, I now have to pay for the road and sidewalks because it needs to be accessed. Right? Just to reference some things, as I worked in the military, I worked as a physician assistant. Um, and as a veteran suffering from PTSD, I find beekeeping to be so settling. That's my safe zone. How many of y'all want to come talk to me with 300,000 bees around me? Not many. All right? Approximately half of the US veterans report feelings that they don't belong in society after separation from the military. Loneliness isn't necessarily the same as being alone. Loneliness refers to the distress people feel when their social involvement and relationships are not what they want them to be. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Your tab is up. I appreciate your comments. We've learned a lot tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for telling us.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm the, uh, Daniel Lincolns and the director of the Central Shenandoah EMS Council and I'll be very brief. Um, first of all, I want to thank you for supporting the Stroke Smart Stanton Initiative. I am a stroke worker too.
No, it was good talk tonight.
So I left a couple of samples of some of the resources that'll be available, um, that we'll, uh, make available through the city and I appreciate your partnership on, on this going forward. Uh, but also wanted to announce that this is the 50th National EMS Week. Um, and Stanton is home to one of Virginia's oldest rescue squads. Stanton Augusta Rescue Squad was founded in 1938. Um, and so, uh, can you just serve the city for all these years?
Not in 38. 50 years.
But, uh, so just if you, if you get a chance, uh, as we wrap up the week, um, be sure to thank the providers, um, for, many of them in our region are still volunteer and do this for, for no fees at all. So, um, thank you for that and thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kessler, do we have any callers?
No, sir. I have no one with their hand raised.
Would anyone else like to speak on any matters? We've had some interesting topics today.
Good evening. My name is Blake Shepard. I live at 939 Selma Boulevard and it's a pleasure to be here this evening. And I just wanted to, uh, say thank you. I got to see, uh, Mr. Tuttle's presentation on, uh, Parks and Recs and I think they've done a fantastic job. I would like to thank, um, uh, Michelle Edwards for her involvement, um, and working with, uh, Mr. Corbett and expanding the swimming. Um, I'm a swimmer and, uh, the, uh, expansion of the, um, the swimming at Gypsy Hill is absolutely fantastic. Doubling, uh, the Parks and Recs program is just a huge, huge, um, win for a lot of people. So it's, uh, very much appreciated. And what they've done at the golf course has been incredible. I walk the park every day and I've watched it inch by inch improve over the past year. So it's been, uh, enjoyable to watch. So money well spent. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Would anyone else like to speak tonight? Mr. Kessler, any caller?
No, sir. No one with their hand raised.
All right. Well, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Memorial Day and the meeting is adjourned. Good night.
Night.